Okay, call to order, the December 21st, 2021, meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. Happy winter solstice. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting of the North Andover Planning Board will be conducted in person and via remote means in accordance with applicable law. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, in-person attendance of members of the public and board members will be permitted. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting live may do so on their televisions by turning to Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26, or going online at www.northandovercam.org. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time by technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town and North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record or proceeding as soon as possible after the meeting. If the public would like to participate in public hearings but not attend the meeting in person, please email your question or comment prior to or during the meeting to The question or comment will be read during the proceeding and responded to accordingly. We do have some members here, some members remote, so Gene, if you could take role, that would be appreciated.
Kelly Cormier?
Here.
Peter Boynton?
Here.
John Simons?
Here.
Aton Goldberg?
I'm here.
And Alyssa Koenig is not here this evening.
Okay, let's start with A&R Plan Zero Salem Street CMFT Limited Partnership. Attorney Vaughn, nice to see you. It's been a while.
Yes, it's been a while. Brian Vaughn for CMTF Limited Partnership. This is just a simple A&R plan request. This is a property that is subject to an agricultural preservation restriction. You may recall, a couple of years back, we were in front of you when we had a similar carve-out of a couple of lots when the land was purchased. And at that time, the abutter, Keith Mitchell, had appeared and had raised an issue with respect to the rear lot line and a possible title dispute. We engaged in some good faith discussions with him. And in order to reconcile any differences, we had agreed to carve off a very small parcel to the rear of his lot and provide a little bit of a buffer between the adjacent lot. So we're just looking to create Lot 3A, which we would then seek to convey to the abutter. It's identified on the plan as not a buildable lot. In addition to obtaining this approval, we of course would have to go through the normal 61A process. But as far as what we're asking for tonight, it's just the approval of the A&R plan to create the 2,500 square foot plus or minus lot.
And leave Lot 3B, Gene, which still has the requisite frontage and access, correct?
Yep, and lot area.
And lot area, okay. As long as both of those. So 3A, not buildable, marked as such. 3B, still buildable, still an appropriate lot under A&R. Okay.
So is 3B the big lot? I just can't see it here.
Yes.
Yes, it is. It's over towards the right side of the plan.
Okay, yeah, okay. So it's just one small piece of that lot, yeah.
It's this hashed area, creating 3A.
That's 3A, but the 3B is much bigger and dwarfs it in size. Okay, makes sense.
Okay, that works. Can we get a motion to...
I would make a motion to direct the planner to sign off on the form I.
Okay, motion made. Can we get a second, please? Maybe a remote second?
Peter, you might be muted.
Peter just, I heard him. He didn't second it.
Okay. Okay, thank you. We did not hear it on our end. Okay, seconded by Peter. All in favor, Kelly?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
John?
Yes.
I vote yes. That A&R is approved.
Aton, did you hear me?
Yes, we did, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Okay. All right. Oh, okay. Bond release, 137 Andover Street Stevens Coolidge Place, trustees of reservation. Request for release of a $10,000 performance bond associated with site plan review special permit granted January 7th, 2020.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I got to make a comment here.
Sure.
I am, out of abundance of caution, I just wanted to disclose that I'm related through marriage to the trustees representative with us tonight, Josh Hassanfuss. I just want to be open about that. I don't see any conflict. And I would note that I've consulted with the chairman prior to the meeting beginning. And Mr. Chairman, could you offer your comment as well?
Yes, and so I, this is a request for a bond release. Obviously, Mr. Boynton and his wife don't have any financial stake in that. The presenter who's presenting doesn't have a financial stake in it. And given that it's a bond release, I don't see any conflict of interest that would prevent Mr. Boynton from discussing this matter with us. If it was a different representative, he would certainly be able to. So I don't think the representative really matters in the facts of this case.
Okay, I appreciate it. I just, out of abundance of caution, I just want to be open.
Sure. And Kelly, as an abutter, did you want to...
Yes, I am going to re-accuse myself.
Okay, and that's because Kelly is a direct abutter to the Stevens Coolidge Place. Okay, so we have three people that will be able to take part in this discussion and vote as members. Okay, with all of that, Gene, why don't you tell us what we're doing?
Okay, so this was a site plan approval allowed for the repurposing of an existing 24-foot by 60-foot shed to become a visitor center, parking for 61 cars and associated landscaping. A construction record plan, engineer certification letter, and pictures are included in your packet. The Stevens Coolidge Place conditions summary, final document, details the list of conditions included in both the planning board and conservation order of conditions, as well as mitigation actions associated with Old Village Lane and Wood Lane. The design of the drainage basin did have to be re-engineered as 72-hour infiltration was not possible to achieve in soil conditions. The redesign was fully vetted with the Conservation Commission and a modification was approved. Rework of the stormwater basin, control structure, and outlet were completed. And so I think we have Josh on the line?
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks, Gene. You know, we're very closely with Gene in the last year and a half, and we're excited with the project results. We've put a lot of time in and have worked hard to achieve the cycling goals and also go beyond that and do some additional screen planting and fencing for the neighbors. So I think we're in good shape on the site. It's vegetated well, and the design's working very well, so we request the monitoring tonight.
And when, when did the plantings go in?
They've been phased. I mean, there's quite a bit of plant material on, like, you know, some are over a year old and some are more recently planted this fall. But I'd say the majority of the plant material went in this spring, you know, April, Mayish, that period.
Okay.
The initial plantings were along the field closest to 115, or Chickering Road, I'm sorry, Chickering Road.
So those are street trees.
That was proposed as the overflow parking. That was installed early on, as well as some of the buffer material right at the entrance to Chickering Road.
Okay. Gene, can you so tell us how you think they've done on the conditions that would allow for a bond release? Is there anything you think that may be still outstanding?
Yeah, I would just say that, so the plantings all did go in. There was a lot of input from the abutters on Wood Lane in terms of citing the plantings so that view angles were maintained. So plantings were put in place but not planted so that people could look from their bedrooms or the kitchen or wherever their area of concern was. So everything has now been installed. The wood fence that was referred to earlier was to help mitigate some impact on Old Village Lane to help both with visual impact as well as sound barrier impact. And so that fence was not in the original plan, but it has been installed. And I think appropriate distance to account for the concerns. I would suggest that past practice with the planning board is you may want to see the landscaping and survivability over the winter season and get updated pictures come spring. And so there's a $10,000 performance bond. You may choose to hold some of that till spring season to make sure survivability over the winter.
Okay.
I guess the one observation that I would have, and this is an observation that I'd make, having, driving by there every single day, particularly when you're going in the direction of the old center, so it's, it'll be on the left. Yep. And when you look into the field there, in the past, you saw a field. Now what you see is cars. It's actually, to me, a little jarring because there's just about always some cars there. I was surprised, the thought occurred to me is, why did not, why did we not require a low-level screen buffer across the entire parking lot so you could actually screen the cars out? Did we put that in there? If we did, I think we should have. Because that viewscape, you notice the cars immediately when you're, when you're looking in that direction.
So this is the direction you're referring to, right? Down Wood Lane?
Yeah, well, it's before you get to Wood Lane. It's, 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 when you get past...
Like Cotty Circle?
When you're basically are at the Franklin, and you look out on the open field into the, you see the full, you see all the cars there. And that was meant always, I think, to be an open field. And I, I mean, it's, I don't want to be picky or unfair because we didn't bring it up, but it's actually quite jarring to me to see a row of cars there in what used to be an open field, just my opinion. And it's something I'd like to see if they would put up a little landscape buffer to buffer the cars.
So we can talk to Josh about that, but no, that, that perspective, I don't recall ever coming up in the past. And the landscape plan did not call for screening from that angle.
Yeah.
I know where you're referring to now.
Yeah.
So we did have an abutter comment, so I did want to read that. So this is from, from Kelly Cormier. My name is Kelly Cormier. I live at 169 Andover Street. Please consider not releasing the bond for 137 Andover Street Stevens Coolidge Place at the 1221 Planning Board Meeting. There are still numerous items outstanding. Not going to go through, well, I'm going to just kind of highlight them. Traffic, parking lot traffic remains visible from Wood Lane. Note that the plantings do not shield the car and car lights.
That's basically the same thing I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah, parked cars remain visible from abutting properties. Photo props, installations are positioned with the budding homes and yards in the background, traffic management continues to be an issue. Noise, a couple of noise issues. It looks like there had been some, there had been some addressing at select board meetings. Noise, the majority of the plantings that were put in are see-through, are currently offering no apparent noise or privacy relief, as well as a safety concern regarding tree. So I think some of these, I mean, all of them, I know there's been some back and forth on those. Some of them, I think, relate to, could we just go to the conditions? So the only, the difficulty I have is that, at least with the bond release, that there were certain conditions that they had to meet that we can hold up bond money for, and there are certain ones that we can't. That there may be alternative ways to approach, but not necessarily with the bond release. So just, Gene, your summary was good. You had a summary, Gene? So it looked like from the summary that most of the condition summary, that most of the conditions had been basically met.
Right, and so the, the performance bond condition, the $10,000...
Yeah.
Was to cover construction erosion control and measures and performance of any other condition contained herein will take place in accordance with the plans and the conditions of the decision to ensure that the ASBIL plans will be submitted. And so they have submitted the ASBIL, they've submitted an engineer certification, and the individual conditions within the decision have been satisfied?
Can you remind...
Do we have our general condition that, you know, based on, like you said, you wait through the end of the winter, but you, you have to replace trees or increase the buffering based on observation in the field?
Yep, so we have a condition, again, as a general condition, planning staff shall review the site. Any screening, as may be reasonably required by the planning staff, will be added at the project owner's expense. And there's one that conditions that any tree that falls into disrepair on the landscape plan needs to be replaced.
And did we have, did, I don't remember if we did it on this one, but did we have some sort of report to come back about noise or lighting or things like that?
So we do. One year from certificate of occupancy, which is, would be due this coming March.
Okay.
And that is...
Okay, okay. So it seems to me we have a couple of avenues. It seems like there has been some satisfaction of at least some neighbors and some that don't have satisfaction. As you mentioned, there's certain things that may need improvement. So it may make sense to at least, in terms of the bond, follow what's kind of been our protocol, release half the bond, remain half for, see how the screening is in the winter. Then when we come back in the, in the spring, in March, we're going to get this study or we need to get this report back, and we can also check the plantings and things like that, because then we can see about the screening. One, is it a bond issue where we, you know, you know, have to look at, at keeping bond money? Is it a permit issue where we have to, hey, you need to come back and we need to, you know, fulfill some of these conditions of our permit, or we need to modify or things like that? But at least we can get those reports and see how things are going. We still have some oversight, both through the permit and through the bond, coming up in the spring. That's at least kind of my thoughts on it.
Yeah, I mean, I understand, you know, why you want to maybe give them a partial read, because it's obviously they've done a lot, and I think they've behaved in good faith, and I think overall it's a very good project that they, they've done. But my concern is there's probably more than $10,000 of stuff that needs to be done that I think when the smoke clears would like to be done. If this were a private individual homeowner, I'd be more inclined to give them something back, but this is a large institution that, you know, is not going to destroy the cash flow of, of the institution if, if we don't give them an extra $5,000 back. So I'd prefer to hold it all until at least March.
Peter, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I agree with John.
Okay, so then why don't we get a motion to maintain bond money as it is and review again upon the furnishing of the one-year report and also evidence regarding the plantings and screenings come springtime?
So moved.
Motion made. Can we get a second?
Second.
All in favor, Peter?
Aye.
John? I vote yes. Okay, bond release 1503 Osgood Street, Nick Harris Hera Development Service, Berry? Request for release of $10,000 performance bond associated with a July 2010 site plan review and corridor development special permit for the construction of a 16,527-foot square foot warehouse office facility. All right, Gene, this is an oldie. What do we got?
This is an oldie. So this was permitted in July of 2010. Condition 10P, which I've displayed on the screen, specifies that the special permit approval shall have, shall be deemed to have lapsed after July 20th of 2012 unless substantial use or construction has commenced within the two-year period or for good cause. This, the next sentence kind of struck me because it's somewhat unusual that the decision defines what would specify substantial use of construction. And in this decision, it included language that for the purpose of this development, the developer shall be deemed to have undertaken substantial use of construction if the developer has begun site grading and tree clearing as noted on the grading and utilities plan, sheet 5 of 10. And so I've included pictures in your packet. It does appear that tree clearing did commence and site grading. Again, compared to the topos on the grading plan, it appears that grading has occurred, and there was a riprap retaining wall installed on the site. So that to me indicates that the permit did get enacted. Is, I'd like to know if Nick Hera is on the call, possibly by phone?
Yes, I am.
So Nick Hera is the, was the property owner. The property was actually sold in June, and so it has changed hands. He's no longer the owner, and he's requested the bond release as the site has been somewhat abandoned since at least 2012.
So the building was never built?
Nope. So this is, this is across the street from 1600 Osgood. There's a gas station out front, and it was permitted to be a contractor bay to the rear of that site. So site grading, tree clearing was done, but the, the structure itself was never constructed.
And what, is it right on Osgood Street or is it on one or the other?
So it's on Osgood Street is the gas station, and behind that, there's a, there's an open space of land.
Yeah.
It's all one parcel, but the back half of it was not constructed.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Yeah, I remember the gas station.
Yep, so that also went through a special permit process, but that got constructed. This, this separate development did not.
So is it, is it, is it, well, at this point, could you even build another building on that, that same lot?
The conditions haven't changed at all? I mean, it was permitted, it, it met all zoning? It just wasn't constructed. And so the, the question comes down, did the permit get enacted? And based on that language, the tree clearing has happened, site grading has happened. He has bond funds held with Conservation Commission and an order of conditions that has not been closed out. And he has this bond that if the permit is in place, potentially the new owner, because it runs with the land, somebody could construct this building. And we wouldn't have bond funds held.
Can't we just, wouldn't it be cleaner just to basically, I mean, as a separate sort of thing, to bring this thing back to a modification and close it out?
That's what I said. Gene and I had that conversation, had this conversation earlier, and we're like, what's the best way to get to the end result? And that's what I said, I said...
So the complication is he doesn't own it anymore, so...
I feel like the planning board, based on changed conditions or, or just based on time, could bring it back itself, I think.
Yeah, I think so.
That we could call for a modification of this, I believe. I was trying to look at, I was trying to look at the zoning bylaws.
About giving bond money away that I worry about is that if you didn't close out the permit, somebody else could go in and make a huge mess of the thing, and you have nothing there, so...
So that was my initial concern, and it struck me, like, I didn't anticipate this language until I pulled it and started preparing my staff report.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, there was obviously some reason why that was done. I forget what it was.
And I don't know if it was initiated by the applicant, wanted that condition, or whether the planning board initiated that condition, but it is unusual to specify.
Yeah, it is, yeah. And there must have been some reason why, maybe we were too clever by half or, you know.
So, I mean, I think the two options are, one, it comes back and then we, and somehow the permit is revoked, so therefore there's no permit, so you'd have to come back for the board for a new permit, or the new owner puts up the bond. If the new owner puts up the bond, then we can give the money back to the old person, and, but then we still have the bond money. I think those are the two options. So I think those are the two ways to go about it. And whether it's the new owner that brings it forward, or the planning board, or, I mean, I guess we can figure that out. I'm trying to look through the bylaws. My, again, it's been a while since I've gone through this, but generally, was my understanding for modifications...
Yeah, there's, there's a provision for, it's 8.17 in Article 8, for revisions to a site plan?
Yep, there.
And there's certain criteria that the staff can approve if it's still going to comply with zoning.
Right.
But there's nothing as broad as this listed there.
Okay. Well, so I think the bottom line is, we're not prepared to release the $10,000. Mr. Harris, are you comfortable telling us who the, could we contact the new owners and see if they'd want to put it up and therefore have access to it? Or whether they'd want to just file something so that the permit can be revoked and then we can get you the money back?
Nick, do you have any comment on that?
I don't, I don't, I don't know, hi, I don't know who the new owners are, number one. And number two, it's been seven years, and I'm sure if they want to develop the back of the property, they're not going to do what we want. And number two, it's been seven years and I'm sure if they want to develop the back of the property, they're not going to do what we want to do.
Right.
So, I mean, I'm sure they're going to want to develop property, but, I mean, that's them, not me.
Okay, um, so when was it sold?
I believe June of this year.
Okay. You said it was a corporation that bought it?
1500 Osgood Group LLC. From what I can see, the previous owner was Service Berry LLC. The decision was granted to Hera Development. The bond was put up, the $10,000 bond was put up by Service Berry LLC.
1503 Osgood, did you say?
1503 Osgood Group LLC.
All right. Owned and managed by Stephen Haggen Nicholas.
Yeah, so I have the, I have the D, Stephen Haggen Nicholas and George Haggen Nicholas, trustees of Middlesex Street Realty Trust.
Okay, well, let's, let's reach out to them and see what their plans are and what they want to do with this permit. Because I think like John said, I don't think we can get the money back right now. Because if we just gave back this 10,000, the new owners could use this permit, build whatever they want, not build whatever they want. And if it's a mess, we don't have a, any recourse. So let's at least reach out to them.
I agree with that and, but if somebody, if, if the next planner was to go through this condition and they see we don't have a bond, they'd be asking for a $10,000 bond. I'm not saying that's the right answer by any means, but if you go through the checklist of milestones that need to be accomplished before a building permit, one of which would be to put up the bond.
Yep, right. So there needs to, so either there needs to be no permit associated with this land or there needs to be a permit with a bond. And I agree with Mr. Harris, Harris, it shouldn't be him that has the bond, but we need a substitute. So we can look into that, but the, let's look into that. We have an address. We can call them, write them, tell them, hey, this is what's going on.
Okay.
Okay?
So I think we do have to make a motion though.
So a motion for not to hold the, the remaining bond money.
Until further ado.
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, I'll make a motion to not release any of the bond money on this project at this time.
Okay, motion made. Can we get a second?
Seconded.
Second by Kelly. Kelly, vote?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
I vote aye. And again, we'll, we'll reach out to, to this corporation and see. I'd like to, I don't like these ones just sitting around forever, so we'll see if we can get this moving pretty quickly.
Okay, thank you.
All right, you're welcome. And if you get any additional information or contact, phone number, email, anything, let us, let Jean know so that we can make this happen, okay?
Okay, yeah, thanks so much.
All right, you're welcome. All right, continued public hearings, 33 Apple Door Lane, Sean and Laura Delaney. Where do we stand with that, Jean?
All right, so I was hopeful that we'd have the stormwater peer review concluded by tonight's meeting and a draft decision. However, it is ongoing. I trust that it'll be ready for the January 4th, so I will prepare a just, a decision for that meeting for your consideration. I think it's just been holidays and timing that we just haven't been able to turn it around.
Okay, so we continue that until November, uh, Jan, January 4th, 2022?
Yep.
Okay. 212 Brentwood Circle, John and Michelle Chernello, same situation?
Exact same situation.
Continued until January 4th, 2022. Okay, discussion item, Royal Crest Estates Draft Mixed Overlay Bylaw, Part Six and Seven. And we have town council graciously here with us tonight.
Okay, so at the last meeting, we covered the draft bylaw articles one through five. I'm sorry, parts one through five. And so tonight, we, we're going to entertain discussing Part Six, which are design guidelines, as well as Part Seven, which are dimensional and density requirements.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have, so as Jean said, we did go up through Part Six at the last meeting. And the remaining, so Part Six is essentially very specific details on the type of design guidelines that will be imposed on the development. And if you start at Part Six, 19.9, Section 19.9, it goes and discusses the intent, which is to enhance the built community of the mixed-use overlay district.
19.19?
19.19, yeah.
Okay, great.
And then the next is, and then it talks about the specific criteria, right? So it, it goes to the building placement, buffer requirements, screening of the utilities, orientation of the building and saying that the building should be towards the open space pedestrian access street trees. And 19.21 goes to the open space, talks about the criteria for open space. And that, it, it all sort of runs the same way as our site plan review guidelines. And it talks about enhancing the built community in terms of highlighting the street trees, landscaping buffers, hiding or making the, the type, the sort of unattractive parts of a development, like the utilities and the trash, all hiding that and putting amenities surrounding that so that those are not shown. So that goes to the open space, the building massing and articulation, that is 19.22. That talks about articulating the large buildings using different types of building materials. 19.23, that also talks about the building appearance and treatments, about the architecture elements, the types of sightings for the exterior buildings and having an articulation between the different floor levels, ground floor, middle floor and top floor. 19.24, that is talking about the landscaping and the different amenities within the environment, making sure that there are sidewalks, there are benches for seating and also encouraging the fact that the commercial use or mixed use will minimize any impact into the residential use.
Can I ask a question on 1923? See, new buildings, design of new buildings shall incorporate architecture. Are there any buildings that are not new buildings?
So if this is a phased project?
Yeah.
Right? So there's going to be, this one building is going to be built first, I mean, it's first and then buildings will be built throughout the years presumably, right? And so those new buildings will be incorporating those architectural features. And then this, since this is a zoning district, this is, you have to think about this in the long term. Like we're talking about the initial permitting of this, but then if there's a, there's some building that needs to be either rebuilt or built in conjunction with that, this would be the guidelines that would apply to that.
Okay.
Okay, so 19, we are up to the landscaping elements. The landscaping is, talks about encouraging the native trees, hedges near parking, screening and planting and making sure there's planting, foundation planting and showing the lighting plans on, the lighting on the plans. 19.27 is parking lot landscaping. The type of landscaping that's required is very similar to our site plan, site plan requirements right now, with the planting around the parking lot perimeters, make sure the island, any islands within the parking lots have plantings and also screening it as much as possible. And it gets into the particulars, very particular as to what type of landscape buffering should be used.
And all of that would then theoretically come back when each kind of different project is being proposed to go through and get the project approval, go through all of these things for each one and then put conditions related to each of those as well, correct?
Right, so if you recall, the, the process is, is that the master plan, master development plan is presented to town meeting, that is approved, then we have the bylaw that's also approved, assuming it's all approved. That's when it's going to be relevant. And then the project proponent comes back and files a project development plan. And at that point, they have to include all of these items on the material submitted to the planning board. The planning board reviews it for consistency with these requirements. So they're going to submit a plan that shows very detailed landscape buffering around the planting, the type of trees that are going to be in the islands in the parking lot and the type of lighting that will be there. And then if you go to like 19.28, it's going to be the pedestrian amenities. Where the sidewalks are going to be, where there are going to be benches, where there are going to be bikes, bicycles. And then the planning board's review is going to be to look at it to make sure it's consistent with the requirements of these design guidelines. Okay.
A lot of this language, in addition to site plan review, a lot of it was pulled from the Osgood, the 40R that was done envisioning what was going to happen at 1600 Osgood Street.
And it's sort of using the, the notion of what we think of as a development with the, sort of the amenity, nice amenity, residential amenities and the commercial amenities to make sure that they're there and that the planning board has that authority to require them and to review the proposal to make sure that it is consistent with that. So 19.29 and 30 require that a, excuse me, a master signage plan be submitted to the planning board to be reviewed. And those two sections deal with the signage requirements, one for residential uses and it's more identification and directories. And then the other provision, Section 30 or 19.30, is the signage associated with the non-residential and mixed use. And that allows for more signage than just identification and directional.
Do we have anything that says that our regular sign bylaw does not apply? I would assume if we have signed regulations within this bylaw, that that would mean that the regular sign bylaw doesn't apply to this. But I don't know if we spell that out.
So in the overall general bylaw and the general provisions, it says that the regulations contained in here apply to the overlay district and when there's inconsistencies, that these, these requirements apply to the overlay district. Anything permitted under that? If you're going to permit under, anything under the underlying zoning, then the, then these requirements won't apply.
So is it worthwhile or necessary to put in that, you know, that, that if you go under the ma, sign master plan as part of this bylaw, that you're not subject to the regular sign bylaw or is that just covered by?
I kind of think it, this feels like when, you know, you would appreciate this as a lawyer, but at work, when we had like a master agreement and then we had individual schedules of work to buy specific things, there was always a provision that in the case of conflict, one would prevail.
Right.
And I think if you do it once, it's a lot easier than to do it every single time. Right, right.
So we, so we have that, we have that. I just didn't know if we needed something specific just because I know signs can be problematic. Just asking if, if, if the initial thing that says that this trumps somewhere else in the bylaws, that's good enough.
That's good enough.
Okay.
Yep, yep. Because, you know, if you look at it, it's going to be reviewed and looked at consistently. So all of these design guidelines are going to be applicable to the project plan. And it's not, we're not going to piecemeal from different areas of the zoning bylaw.
And the other examples in our bylaw, I think the mill area has the same.
Provision for a master signage plan as well as Osgood Landing now. We just added that at the last town, well, two town meetings ago, I think now.
Yep. Okay. Roadway dimensional guidelines?
Yep, and then I think, yes, so roadway dimensional guidelines, these, this talks about the, the different roadway surfaces and the widths needed, the parking requirements and then also the sidewalks. Not, it discusses where the parking area should be, talks about the sidewalks, crosswalks and streetscape elements. So those are those requirements for the roadway designs and there's the storm. 19.32 is the stormwater requirements. That's our very standard requirements for stormwater, storm drainage facilities, preventing easements, stormwater systems, those type of requirements. 19.33, 34, those are, goes to the utilities also, water facilities and the sewer. 19.35 is the street lines, is that street signs will be installed at intersections. And then here we get to the, sort of the part that the planning board really has to have a discussion about. Tonight is the dimensional requirement, so it's the required parking is 19.36. And we have a table in 19.36A and that shows the required parking. And the, the numbers that are on, in, within, contained within the chart are the numbers that the project proponent has put forward. And so it's sort of a discussion that the board needs to probably look at and determine if that's something that they're comfortable with. We've had numerous, throughout the zoning working group, we've had a lot of discussion about the different parking requirements. And the proportion, I believe, is consistent with the zoning bylaw in other areas.
Do we have anything from the building inspector for GBW about whether they feel like these parking requirements would be sufficient?
We do not. What I think would be helpful is if the proponent could give us a table that shows what
They're recommending versus what the bylaw would require for the same type of uses. So we can see the delta of the two.
Which bylaw would require?
Our zoning bylaw. So we have a table of parking requirements for these similar uses.
Okay.
So the only other thing is, do we have anything from our traffic buddies about what sort of standards are or evolving standards for all these uses?
We don't yet.
I mean, it'd probably be good to cross-check it against that. You know, I know the, you know, in urban settings, particularly close to transit, you know, they, they put numbers in some cases that were too high and it turns out they don't need as much and now they're going in the opposite direction. But I just don't know where this fits in like the multifamily one, .75, say two bedrooms, that's one and a half. You know, I, I just don't have a sense of sort of what averages have been or what the traffic engineers recommend.
So, so I think that'd be good. So what's proposed, what our current bylaw says and then what's the current state of affairs of what's actually thought of as kind of recommended numbers these days? So, yeah.
So the parking trends?
Yeah.
For mixed use to relative?
Right, it's .75.
Yep.
Is that an accepted, you know, is that kind of what the standard is? Is one, the standard is our bylaw too strict? Is our bylaw too lenient? Is this more in line with what, you know, is being done these days? That would be helpful.
Okay. It does, it does talk about sort of that notion of shared parking here also, which is what John was referring to. And then it does, there is some language in here that requires charging stations for electric and hybrid type vehicles. There's bicycle parking. And there's also a provision that allows for a modification of the parking requirements, sort of balancing the needs with other amenities and also the availability of parking for a particular use. So 19.37, which is, goes, we're going to Part Seven. And this is referencing the dimensional requirements. And we, in this instance, we've also put the numbers in with the project proponents have proposed. And what we have is the maximum lot coverage and we're looking at the entire overlay district, which would be 60% maximum building coverage, that also goes to the entire overlay district, which is 30% and the minimum open space is at 10%. The floor area ratio is the .8%. Multifamily dwelling units, this is no more than, I think we have our number wrong there?
No, 824.
Oh, okay. It couldn't be that. Okay, 824. Townhouse, no more than 200 units. Independent elderly housing, no more than 35. Dorms, no more than 1,000 beds.
Those all add up to the 1309 August program summary, so that's, that's the breakout.
You know, aside from the fact that this is obviously what everything hangs on, you know, one of the problems with this, the way it's framed, is that if you change the mix, you're going to change everything. It's not just changing one thing, it's, you pull one thing out. It's not just changing one thing, it's, you pull one thing out, everything changes.
You mean in the sense of the maximum coverage?
Well, like if you pull more of one thing, if you want to change one thing and, you know, add or change a use, you can't have to modify the bylaw. And then if you modify the bylaw, does that, does everything else go down? Does it go up? Does it go sideways? I mean, it's.
Well, I mean, at least, so that's true, the benefit is that, that if it passed, that you're really stuck with that, you know, you can't really go off, which is I guess a benefit or a detriment, I'm not sure.
You can't go.
But, I mean, if you realistic about it, over the course of tenure, something's going to change.
And, right, so you can't exceed it, you can go, there can be less than.
You can still go below it, right.
You can go below it, but you can't exceed this number, so it's a maximum number. And then there is the provision in the bylaw that talks about if there's going to be a change, and there's a three level of review. The first review is the planning board determines if the change is significant or will cause any issues, and that's, the planning board makes that decision. The second one is the public hearing is held, and then if it's not an adverse impact to the development, then there's the decision, and then after the public hearing, the planning board determines that it should go back to town meeting, so that would probably be something that's.
So, but actually, I'm just thinking about that, so to John's point, let's say five years from now, there's something, and it seems like the dorm should be a thousand and five beds, right? Really minor thing, right? We would consider that a very minor change, five more beds, it's one bedroom, whatever, but that's important for some reason. And we'd say, okay, well, you're coming to us and you want to change it, that's fine, we accept that, but the bylaw still says no more than a thousand. So are you permitting something that's not allowed by the bylaw, or? I'm just trying to think that through, because our bylaw says you can do that, and the planning board could say, okay, that's okay, and give you a permit, but now technically you're, have a thousand and five units, and the dorm, the bylaw only says a thousand.
Right, so there, well, there's, as I said, there's provisions.
That allow for that, but.
Right. Well, it's similar to coming to the board for a variance.
Correct, would you, that's what I'm just trying to think, would you have to go to the zoning board technically to get a variance?
Well, we, there's, there's waivers.
Or this cover that?
Yeah, where there's a, the planning board is given the authority to waive certain provisions of this. You have the, so there's two, two things, two ways to look at it. You have the waiver, which you have under a special permit, right, that in a lot of that your sort of multifamily developments, when you're looking at special permits, you have that authority already, so you give a waiver for certain things. And that's not a, that's not a variance, it's not a ZVA, it's the planning board. So you have that here, too.
Okay, so if I'm thinking of it more as a waiver, you know, that means, okay.
But if you went to something like fifteen hundred?
No, no, granted, granted, right, it doesn't fly.
Then it would kick in.
I was just more thinking about the situation where we've given a permit and allowed something that's not actually allowed by the bylaw, but then the idea of a waiver, it's pretty much like a waiver, okay? That satisfies my intellectual curiosity.
Okay. So then we also have the, I'll just go through the dimensional requirements. So the retail spaces, no more than seventy-two thousand eight hundred and nineteen, very precise number, office space, no more than twelve thousand square feet, and the hotel, no more than a hundred and two keys.
So it's a hundred and twenty-four thousand on the office, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Hundred and twenty-four thousand, I wrote that wrong, okay. Um, and, go ahead.
Hundred and two keys, oh, but it still has height requirements and stuff like that, right?
Right, so then we get into the height requirement.
Those numbers just match the current program summary.
Yeah, 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 that's fine, that's fine, yeah.
And then we have the, the different maximum heights, and it's going to be with, spreading amongst the different sub-districts, so there's sub-district one, two, and three, and there's different not to exceed feet in each of those. And I believe, and Jean, maybe you can help me on these numbers, but it started with this, the original proposed for sub-districts, the maximum height was seventy?
So it's been many iterations, but right now, the maximum height, if I remember correctly, in sub-district three would be seventy-nine feet, and two, which includes the hotel, would be seventy-four feet, and the townhouses, I believe, are roughly forty feet, and which are in sub-district one.
And so I don't know if we have, if you have the plan, the master development plan that we could put up to, so that you could get an.
I don't have any that show, not the master development plan that shows that, so.
I think, for tonight, I think we're just kind of seeing the structure of this, and we'll get, when we're going to actually have a discussion of the actual heights and what people are thinking, I want all the members of the board to be here, I want the applicant and their team to be here to have a full discussion over that.
Okay, I was just thinking if you could see where the different sub-districts are, but I'm sure you all remember exactly where it is.
Yeah, so that just hasn't been updated, the program summary was updated, and it had a column that indicated building heights, but the, the master plan itself at one time did show building heights, but they're not, they're not accurate for what's being presented today.
Okay, all right, so that sort of concludes the review of the part six and seven, we can go through part eight and nine also, if that, if that works. I don't know if that's enough information for tonight?
Yeah, it's not on the agenda, so.
Oh, okay.
I prefer just to stop there, and I think just getting the sense of that, and be able to think about which of those things we need to come back and really have discussions on, and really, maybe a timeline of when we're going to do that, I think is probably something you and I should talk about, Jean. But I think that's good for tonight, and that's very helpful. Thank you for answering all my questions. Does anyone else have questions at the moment? All right, thank you so much, Suzanne.
Okay. Have a good night.
We also have a couple of better comments that were received.
Okay, let's do those.
Okay, so first, we have a response to a better comment, so at the last meeting, as you may recall, we took public comment kind of at the end of the agenda, the proponents had left the meeting, and so we have written response to the questions that were asked.
Okay.
So the first one was related to the stormwater peer review, and why it's only a preliminary design.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Preliminary design review. And, so I'll just read the response into the record, so the preliminary stormwater analysis was prepared to verify that the master plan would be able to meet the regulatory requirements, as well as the additional project commitments noted in the stormwater memo. As noted in the preliminary stormwater analysis, the project will indeed meet or exceed all regulatory requirements, which will be further confirmed with final stormwater report slash analysis. The final stormwater report slash analysis will not be able to be prepared until the project's site grading and drainage utilities have been designed, which would include detailing of all proposed stormwater management and closed drainage systems. These designs would not occur until after the approval of the zoning overlay district and the master plan at town meeting. If ultimately approved, the move forward, if ultimately approved, to move forward, each phase slash the middle of the project under the development project plan review would be submitted to the town and stormwater peer review consultant with developed site civil engineering and landscape site plans, and final stormwater reports for review approval and confirmation of the findings in the preliminary stormwater analysis. So essentially, every project that would come forward if this was to be ultimately approved at town meeting, would have its own stormwater report and design, and that would be peer reviewed. Okay, so the second question asked about if there would be any prohibition of adult entertainment and/or banquet facilities, would the hotel have a conference room and/or banquet facility? So I discussed with Suzanne whether a banquet facility would be considered permitted under proposed allowed use of hall, club, theater, or other places of indoor amusement and assembly. So that's a very common use that is throughout the bylaw in many zoning districts, allow for a hall, club, theater, or other places of indoor assembly, amusement or assembly, and we both felt a banquet facility would fall under that, but ultimately, it's the building inspector's role to interpret the bylaw. In my opinion, a banquet facility would meet that qualification.
Are there, in other, do we have something in other bylaws that specifically calls out banquet facility?
I think the word banquet.
Yeah, so it seems like places where, that we have those in town are places where this particular provision would apply, right?
Yeah, I mean, a function hall banquet facility, I mean, I think it's reasonable to interpret them as a similar use.
Yeah.
And so the hotel within the master plan is envisioned to be a banquet, a boutique New England style inn, it is modeled off of very successful and beloved hotels like the Hanover Inn adjacent to Dartmouth College in Hanover, New Hampshire, the Viking Hotel in Newport, Rhode Island, the Inn at Boltwood in Amherst, Mass, and the Williams Inn adjacent to Williams College in Williamstown, Mass. Like these model hotels, our hotel is small with only a hundred and two rooms, and a vision to have a restaurant and meeting rooms for small functions like baby showers, small weddings, birthday parties, business meetings, or any number of smaller event needs for the people of North Andover. It is not a large convention-style hotel facility, and would not have a large, large events, as you would see at hotels of that type. That being said, a different use that is allowed is this halls, theaters, indoor assembly, which likely would be a banquet facility as well.
Okay, and adult entertainment, as I understand it, we have one location in town where that's allowed, and it's excluded everywhere else?
So it's a zoning district, it's a defined term in our bylaw, it's not a permitted use within this bylaw, and therefore it would not be allowed.
Okay.
Okay. So the other resident comment came in, I used the email address as the name, so hopefully this is right, so it's Karen Fugzen, if I'm saying that right, and she wrote on December third to myself, "Thank you for all the documentation you sent about Royal Crest Development. I'm really appreciative of the town taking its time and doing the due diligence. North Andover needs to continue to grow in ways that will enhance the opportunity and lifestyle of residents. I'm in favor of the Royal Crest development. Mixed-use development and its goal of creating a walkable community is something that large cities have been trying out with a lot of success, especially as more people continue to work from home, a trend that started with the pandemic and seems likely to continue because people like it. It makes sense to create communities where people are less dependent on their cars. The ecological aspects of the development are also really important. Water and energy conservation are essential to our survival on the planet. I like that there will be subsidized housing for low-income families and individuals in the development. Housing in North Andover and Massachusetts in general is too expensive. I will continue to follow the discussions regarding the development and look forward to seeing the final plan. All best, Karen."
Okay, great. Any other comments to come in today?
Those are the only two.
Okay.
I'm sorry, let me check my email quick. Nope, I have not received any.
And we had hoped for the water study, capacity study?
So we will have that on the January fourth agenda, we have received it.
Fantastic.
I've asked a member of, representative from Western Sampson, who conducted the study to attend on January fourth. I haven't had confirmation back that they can, but I trust, we should have somebody here that night.
Is it, I'm sure people want to look at it internally and things like that, but if we could get that maybe the week before, or just have it open to the public even before the Thursday, if it's available?
Yeah, so there's a couple edits being made, just, so as soon as it's available.
As soon as it's available, just, the more time people have, the better. I know we have everything usually posted together, but if there's more time and it's done, I don't, not, I wouldn't want it to be out and then change, and then people, why has this changed? But if it's done, the sooner we could have it out, I think that would be great, because I think that's really, it's important to this project, but it's important to the town just as a whole, so.
Yep.
Okay. Anybody else have anything that they want to say? Kelly, for your reference, we do have one citizen here, one, and one representative from Royal Crest, and that's the attendance for tonight, which is a lot considering it's four days before Christmas, and so, thank you all for coming. Can we get a, inclusionary zoning, I know you're still working on that, I'd like everyone to be here before we take any other actions on that, if that's okay?
Okay.
Because I, I think there's a discussion with all of us, so just keep working with the groups that you're working with, and then we'll talk about that on the fourth. Can motion, can we get a motion to approve the minutes from December seventh?
So?
Motion made?
Seconded.
Seconded by Kelly, can we get a vote? Kelly?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Let's get Peter, Peter?
Aye.
I vote yes, all right, anything before we adjourn? Excellent, have a, happy holidays, everybody, can we get a motion to adjourn?
So?
Motion made.
Seconded.
Seconded. Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Yes, thank you, everybody, thank you, Karen.
Happy, please, everyone, happy new year.
Happy new year, everybody.